All right, yeah, we're live, you can go ahead and stop.
Everybody, I'm Danny Grossman. I apologize for our technical difficulties, but thanks for joining us for a special Zoom call carried over Facebook and YouTube brought to you by World Misrahi. Today's program will be a special edition of a weekly program called One on One with Alan Dershowitz, which was formerly broadcast on IL TV for nearly three years. We want to give you, our viewers, the opportunity to hear Professor Dershowitz, go one-on-one with his guests, and also get a chance, hopefully, to have your questions answered by Professor Dershowitz, one of America's greatest legal minds. He is a leading expert on criminal and constitutional law, civil liberties, and the Arab-Israeli conflict. Hi, Professor Dershowitz, and it is great to have you back again.
It's great to be here, you know, I hope everybody's safe and staying home and doing all the right things. Today was a very, very special day. Our dear friend Eli Beer returned to Israel, having been on a ventilator for too many weeks, and he's back in Israel, having been flown there by Sheldon and Miriam Adelson in their plane in order to make sure he was comfortable and could fly with medical assistance, and it's one of the great miracles and one of the wonderful events to have Eli Beer back in Israel.
Well, that's amazing. And for those people who aren't familiar, Eli Beer is, of course, the founder and head of Hat Salaah, one of the most outstanding organizations in Israel which helps save lives. And for those who are not familiar with it, you can go online and find out more about it. Terrific organization. So today's edition is a special one for Yom HaShoah, Israel, the Holocaust Memorial Day in Israel. And we want to join Professor Dershowitz for a timely discussion of contemporary antisemitism. So today he'll be in dialogue with special guests. It will be, first is Elon Carr, the US Special Envoy to Monitor and Combat Antisemitism. As Special Envoy, he advises the Secretary of State and is responsible for directing US policies and projects aiming at countering antisemitism throughout the world. So Elon, thank you very much for joining us. It is a true pleasure to have you with us, sir.
Well, thank you, Danny and Professor Dershowitz. Alan, my good friend, thank you for having me. And I want to really say to Alan, you know, in a world that is troubled not only by pandemics, but also by the dearth of moral clarity and courage, your voice, which is always a voice of moral clarity and courage, is not only sorely needed, but really the panacea for so many of our social ills. So I want to thank you, Alan, for what you bring to our country and what you bring to our world.
Well, thank you, but nobody standing alone is a panacea. This is an issue that is so deep that we all have to work together. It is so thrilling to know that the administration in Washington has appointed you to be in this ambassadorial post and to have the status of having the United States government stand behind you. You know, last night I watched, finished watching the series on television called The Plot Against America, based on the novel by Philip Roth, which contemplates a time back in the 40s where Lindbergh gets elected instead of Roosevelt and the spread of antisemitism. And while I was watching that, I was actually thinking of you, Elon, I was thinking of you, Ambassador, because in those days, the government stood with the perpetrators of antisemitism. Today, our government, and thanks to you, most governments around the world, stand strongly against antisemitism, some more strongly than others, to be sure. We had a great victory as Jews with the defeat of Jeremy Corbyn, and who is no longer the leader of the Labour Party, because he was the first person in post-Holocaust history who could have been elected to be the Prime Minister of a great American ally while expressing antisemitic, anti-Israel, and tolerating deep antisemitism within his party. So it was a great victory for decency and morality to see him defeated and replaced by somebody who actually has connections to the Holocaust. And so we're moving in the right direction, thanks to you, but there's no panacea. You know, to be a Jew, I'm 81 years old, and everybody says I should retire. But to be a committed Jew means you can never, you can never retire, because it's never over. There's always, you have to look over your right shoulder, you have to look over your left shoulder. We're not paranoid. We have real enemies out there on the extreme right and the extreme left, and we have to work together to defeat them. And having the United States government behind that effort is unprecedented in modern history. And thank you for being such an important part of that.
Well, thank you, Alan, and I'm glad you pointed to the strength of this administration in that regard. I have to tell you a Yom HaShoah story. So one year ago, I was part of the first ever United States delegation to March of the Living. President Trump, one of the United States represented in official, in an official capacity. And so I, along with six ambassadors, our ambassadors to Poland and Israel and Germany and so many other places, we stood arm-in-arm, shoulder-to-shoulder, and made that terrible searing march between Auschwitz and Birkenau, together with thousands of students and faith leaders and clergy and professors. And I'll tell you, it was, it was, it was searing. I mean, you can't be in that place of death without having, without being affected permanently, and every ambassador there was. And then a few hours later, we boarded a plane and flew to Israel. And the next evening, we were again arm-in-arm and shoulder-to-shoulder, but this time not in a death march, but at the hotel celebrating Shabbat. And I want you to know that for these ambassadors, I mean, you know, you and I, Alan, we've been to Israel a ton of times. For many of these ambassadors, it's their first time, they were, they, some of them were openly in tears, because the contrast of the hell and the death and the evil of Birkenau, and then the light and the beauty and the magnificent human achievement that is the state of Israel, was a contrast that, that forever made us live that experience of going from darkness to light, from evil to goodness. And that, and that's why fighting antisemitism also means fighting for the rights of the state of Israel and the Jewish people to have self-determination in the Jewish homeland.
And that's so important, and I think President Trump understood that when he signed that executive order saying that when university campuses encourage anti-Zionism, they're encouraging antisemitism as well. Look, I've been on that March of the Living on three occasions, and it never ceases to make me angry and get me recommitted to doing what I do. I stood in front of the march carrying a Torah with survivors. Two years ago, I wish I were able to be there last year. We spoke at the university, the Jagallonian University, celebrating the liberation of Auschwitz a couple of years ago with Erwin Kotler, and Eli Wiesel was supposed to be there, but it was just before he passed away. But these are remarkable events, and thousands of students from the place of death to the place of life in Israel. It's an amazing experience for them. It does more than reading any number of books. You know, I've written books about Israel, and I'm proud of the books I've written. But when I bring students to Israel, it has more of an impact than any book you can ever write.
And it goes, and it also drives home the point that the creation of the state of Israel wasn't simply a magnificent achievement in its own right. It is, it is human history's most beautiful response to history's greatest evil. And that is a stunning reason for all the world to stand in defense of Jewish self-determination, of Zionism, and of the state of Israel. So we've got to fight antisemitism in the diaspora, in our communities, of course. We have to fight it in the United States. We have to fight it in Europe and Latin America. It's everywhere in the world, as you correctly said. But we also have to always, always, to fight Jew hatred that masquerades as hatred of the Jewish state, not hatred of the Jew in the community, but hatred of the Jew among the countries, as you yourself have said so many times, and that's exactly right.
At the Student Day on university campuses, you're not attacked if you're a Jew on university campuses today, but you are attacked if you're a Jew who's a Zionist. And the students who proudly display flags of Israel or proudly wear kippot that have Israel on them, they're the ones who are marginalized and demonized on university campuses. And the claim that it's not antisemitism is belied by the arguments that people make. Jews are too pushy, they have too much influence, they have too much power, they control the media, they control the banks, they control all this. And I have to tell you, when pandemics occur throughout history, it usually is a ripe time for the increase of bigotry and antisemitism. Today, it may be pointing fingers at Asian-Americans or China, but it quickly moves from that to the Mossad is behind this, Israel is behind this. And the one thing the hard left and the hard right have in common, they both indulge in conspiracy theories, and Judaism and Israel is often at the center of these conspiracy theories.
Well, Alan, I just want, you know, we're gonna have to go to our next guest, just, I just want you to sign off. By the way, if our people don't just show, there's one terrific cartoon, which even shows a Corona tank, an Israeli tank, as in the form of a coronavirus just playing into the modernization of the Jews poisoning the wells. And maybe you can put that up while we're talking.
Danny, I just wanted to say that in response to what Alan said, that Alan and I were together in the White House when President Trump signed that executive order. And Alan, I'll never forget your words when the president called you up. You said, you know, you've been on the campus for so many decades, and this moment, you said, the signing of that executive order is the single most important step taken to fight antisemitism that you've seen in your lifetime. And I got to tell you, that, that was very powerful, and that's so true. And the campuses are not the only frontline, you know, we've got white supremacists online, we all know that. We've got militant Islamists, but the campuses certainly are one of the front lines in this fight for, for the, for the Jewish people.
And the most important, the future, the, remember that the white supremacists are the past, hopefully. The Islamistists, hopefully, are the past. But the future students, the kids who are well-intentioned, think they're doing the right thing with identity politics, and they're being turned against Israel and turned against Zionism, that's what's so serious, because they are, 20 years from now, the leaders of Congress, presidential candidates, the editor-in-chief of the New York Times, the senior partner at Goldman Sachs, they're going to be the ones who are controlling this country. And that's why we have to appeal to them, and we have to be making the case on campuses, and you do such a good job doing that.
Well, thank you, Alan, and thank you, Danny, for this great program. Thank you for having me. And also to end on good news on Yom HaShoah, which is sorely needed. Alan, you said it well, that, that we have so many partners and allies and friends in the world. And one of my great joys in this job is partnering with leaders of our, of our allies around the world who get it, who understand not only that the Jewish people have rights, but they understand that the fight against antisemitism is ultimately a fight for their own future and their own children. Because antisemitism, as President Trump always calls it, is a vile poison that destroys not only Jews, but wrecks every society that imbides that poison. And so we've got good friends and allies around the world, our privilege to work with them. And God willing, God willing, with our partnership, we can bequeath to our children a better, more safe, more just world.
Well, may you go from strength to strength, and thank you, and thank everybody who has been part of this program of putting the United States on the right side of this fight against antisemitism.
Thank you, Alan. Take care.
Elon, I know, I know you may have to run, if you can possibly stay on just for your own benefit. We have three more guests I want to push in here, who definitely will be very interested in hearing everything they have to say. And they're all related to a book which was written by our next guest, Dan Decker, who is the Foreign Policy Fellow at the Jerusalem Center of Public Affairs. That's the JCPA run by your colleague Ambassador Dory Gold. And Dan is also a research fellow at the IDC, the Institute for Countering Terrorism at the IDC, run by my friend Boris Gennor, and he's former Secretary General of the World Jewish Congress. And his recent book is called Israelophobia.
A marvelous book, Dan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ambassador.
It is a marvelous book, I agree.
So Dan, without that, will you please go talk a little bit about the book? And then go from there, because we also have-
Let me just apologize, because I have another, I have a conference call I have to get on, so alas, I have to go. But Dan, you and I will be speaking soon, and thank you all for this wonderful, important, and timely program.
Thank you. Okay, good luck, and we'll be seeing you around. So Dan, you're going to be up, but also I will introduce, as you go along, two phenomenal guests who are additional, who will be coming on together. That's Olga Michelle Washington and her husband Joshua Washington. Each, in their own right, wrote a totally different chapter to your book. So why don't you go ahead and talk about the book, and then we'll have Olga and Joshua come on.
Well, thank you, Danny, for having me on the show, One on One with Professor Alan Dershowitz. And Professor Dershowitz, it's, it's been an honor to have been your student for indirectly and directly for 37 years, since I was, since I was an undergraduate at Harvard College. I'd like the, the audience, listeners on this program to know that the, that the motivation for this book, Israelophobia in the West, which I have a copy of right here, The Hijacking of Civil Discourse and How to Rescue It, the, the motivation for this, I think the founding, palpable motivation was 37 years ago, 1983, when Professor Dershowitz, who was the youngest tenured professor in the history of Harvard University since the early 1600s, I should say, he shepherded us, a number of us Harvard College students into a meeting of the Palestinian Liberation Organization that had been sanctioned by what was called at that time the VSA, the Black Students Association. And a number of us Jews who had never felt or heard or experienced Israelophobia or antisemitism, experienced both in that meeting, because the PLO representatives refused to call on any Jewish student, any student with a Jewish last name, any student who looked Jewish, any student that had a mug in David or a kippah or any mark that would identify him or her as a Jew. And what Professor Dershowitz did was he, he suggested that all of the Jewish students get up in protest and leave together with him in a, in an act of tremendous pride and integrity and Jewish self-confidence to leave that event and file a formal complaint with the administration, which we did. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Professor Dershowitz, because I haven't, I didn't have a chance, six weeks ago, when Professor Dershowitz was in Israel, to help us launch the book, Israelophobia in the West, to tell him that that was really a founding moment for me. And little did I know that in 1990, I would make Aliyah and become observant, go to the yeshiva, and then end up writing this book. So the, the world and life has come around, years later, and Professor Dershowitz was really a rabbi for me, in a sense, of helping me understand what Jewish self-worth and self-confidence was. And it really was a foundational moment that for the next almost four decades would result in the writing of Israelophobia. And I think that today, which is Yom HaShoah, the Remembrance Day of the Holocaust, we're in the middle of a pandemic, the likes of which the world has not seen for 100 years since the Spanish Flu of 1918, that claimed millions of lives. And that was the last time that Jews were also accused of advancing that pandemic. And those accusations, what we call the Corona Conspiracy, is the, really the sum total of 2,000 years of accusations against Jews. But today, we have for the first time in the history, in the 72, almost 73-year history of the state of Israel, the first time that the state of Israel was, is on the target list as being responsible for both engineering and spreading the coronavirus among its Palestinian neighbors. And, and this is very much a point of convergence, Danny and Professor Dershowitz, for the book, Israelophobia in the West, because there has been a terrible mistake made, in my assessment, as the editor of this book, and that is that too many people have given the Palestinian Authority leadership, beginning with the founder of the Palestinian Liberation Organization, Yasser Arafat, and his successor Mahmoud Abbas, and the Prime Minister, the current Prime Minister, Mohammed Staya, they've given them a pass as being political activists in, in pursuit of their own liberation. And what they have done under the sanction of political, some sort of political liberation theology, political enmity, adversary relation with Israel, is they've engaged in wholesale antisemitism against, against the nation-state of the Jewish people. Most recently, most recently, Prime Minister Staya has actually accused Israeli soldiers of purposely spreading the coronavirus on the door handles of Palestinian cars. And others, and other senior members of the Palestinian leadership have done the same. And this Corona Conspiracy has gone viral throughout the world in all kinds of media. And, and so we are, as they say, history beats itself, and we're in the middle of that, in the middle of this Corona Conspiracy pandemic. Not only the virus itself is claiming lives regardless of religion, ethnicity, color, creed, or clan. And, and this is really one of the reasons, in retrospect, why the Israelophobia in the West book is so important, because so many people in the West think that any type of accusation that is launched against Israel by the Palestinians is simply political in nature and, and I think, and not at all antisemitism. And both Ambassador Carr and Professor Dershowitz have insisted on this program, as Professor Dershowitz insisted a month ago, 200s in Israel and around the world, when we broadcast the opening of the book, that anti-Zionism and conspiracy accusations against the Jewish state is Jew hatred, no less than integral Jew hatred. It's collective Jew hatred versus Jew hatred. And we've got to understand in, in moments of moral clarity that we cannot allow the hatred and the promulgation of conspiracy theories of antisemitism against the Jewish state, such as Israel is an apartheid state, such as Israel engages in ethnic cleansing, such as Israel was a racist endeavor, all of which have been mentioned definitionally by the working definition against antisemitism, the IHRA, the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, working definition against antisemitism. But it does seem, and this is, again, another motivational moment for, to share with you for the writing of the book, that all too often, in the Western discourse, when it comes to Israel, the, the promulgators of antisemitism are, are given a pass as a, as, in the context of political warfare against Israel, when in fact, it is simply downright antisemitism. And, and I think that we have got to be very clear about what is antisemitism and what is not, according to the IHRA working definition.
That's what's important about this book. I was honored to be able to add a chapter to the book and also participate in the opening event, is that it makes clear that so much of today, what passes as politically acceptable anti-Zionism, you scratch the surface just a bit, and it's classic antisemitism. The BDS movement is a perfect example. I am subject to the BDS movement. The founder, Baal Guti, will not debate me. The Oxford Union invited him to debate me on BDS. He wouldn't do it, because I'm a Jew who supports Israel. And that makes me subject to being boycotted. He doesn't want anybody to hear my views. And fortunately, I did have the debate at Oxford, and we won the debate, even though he wasn't there. They had a very good human therapist who conceded basically many of the points that you've now made, that Israel is not an apartheid state, that it's a better human rights record than almost any other country in the world faced with conflict threats. And your book should be mandatory reading for college students, even high school students today, going to confront this combination of anti-Zionism and antisemitism on campus. They have to be prepared, and your book is a terrific primer to have the students read to prepare. So if any of you have kids going to college, if college is ever open again, kids in high school, please get them copies of this book, read before they go off to college or before they go to their second or third year in college. Really important.
Alan, let me interject here right now, before we move to our next guest. For those people who looked on the, on the website today, which advertised this, there also should be a link to that book. Dan Decker and the JCPA have very graciously put this book up as a PDF for a free download, because it's so important that people get this information, and it's very valuable. Just like you, Alan, also have used your, your own time, and you have very graciously allowed free download of your latest book. It's not related to the Shoa, it's not related to antisemitism, but it's related to another very important issue, and that's your, your book about- Alan, just a word about your book.
Guilt by accusation, yeah.
And it's, it's a phenomenal book. Alan, you can download it, or you can get it free from Kindle, and you're weighing all your rights on that, and it's a great thing to read in these Corona days.
But it, you know, it is related. The anti-Israel press has picked up this book and tried to discredit me and my advocacy for Israel based on a totally false accusation by a person I'd ever even met. And I tell the story about that in the book, and how they tried very hard to use this book to keep me off college campuses. The worst offender was the 92nd Street Y in New York that wouldn't allow me to speak about my book in defense of Israel, defending Israel, because they said they knew I didn't do what I was accused of. But because I was merely accused, that's enough, they didn't want trouble. So when you get 92nd Street Y, not allowing me to speak in defense of Israel based on what they acknowledge as a false accusation, we really understand how close McCarthyism is coming to America. And that's why I made my book available free for anybody to download and read on Kindle. And when you read it, please write to the 92nd Street Y and tell them that they cannot be using these things to prevent a pro-Israel speaker from making the case for Israel.
Alan, that actually segues perfectly to our next two guests. Please turn on your camera, this is Olga. Our next two guests, because it also touches on a topic that you talk about a lot, Alan, which is intersectionality, which is how sometimes people like to use antis, people against, they said, the Jews and the other different causes and link them all together. So our next two guests are together, and I apologize for cutting your time short, as I do to you also, Dan. Olga Michelle Washington, who is an attorney, corporate consultant, and the CEO of DEISI, the Defend, Embrace, Invest, and Support Israel. And in book, in Dan's book, she has a phenomenal chapter about the apartheid lie and the appropriation of South Africa's history. So before I go to you, I also want to introduce your husband, Joshua Washington, who writes about it from a completely different angle, from a completely different background. Joshua Washington is the Director of Institute of Black Solidarity with Israel, the IBSI, and a composition graduate of the University of Pacific Conservatory of Music. He's a musician. His chapter is called Reaffirming Dr. Martin Luther King's Legacy. As we know today, people of our age, Alan and Dan as well, Martin Luther King was a staunch Zionist, but today that's being completely rewritten, that narrative. And it takes people with the conviction and the integrity and the courage of people like Joshua to stand up and correct that. So, because the people who know and who read that will see how Dr. King championed security, self-determination, and territorial integrity. So, you know, and my own family was involved in that. So with that, I'm going to turn over the conversation. Olga, what I'd like to do is you to go first, and then Alan, react, please, to Olga, and then Josh, just go right away from there.
Well, thank you, Danny, and thank you for having us on the show. Alan, it's an absolute honor to be on the show. Thank you so much. And I do need to say thank you particularly to Danny, and rather to Dan, who we met, I met a couple of years ago. Never thought that it would come to this. He reached out and graciously invited me to contribute to the chapter. Very grateful for that. As was introduced on this O of Daisy, a nationalist and organization, a nonprofit, based in South Africa. I'm a South African native, and it was started, in fact, by my father, who, after having come to the United States, was exposed to some of the people who worked on British characters and said, we, black South Africans, have to have a response and have to have an active response to the demonization of Israel, a narrative that actually belongs to us, but they've perverted it. And so that's how I came to the, before then, I was of the Christian faith. And prior to that, I just believed in praying for Israel, but never saw a responsibility to actually speak up and speak truth. And once I then started to do some of my own research and see the work of BDS in my country, see the work of BDS in various other nations across the world, I in fact made, made a decision to actually get involved. And one of the reasons I'm so passionate about the conversation, not only because of how it impacts South Africa, and I'll speak to that a little bit with regards to my contribution to the book, but as an African, I have seen how efforts by Israel to help Africa, Africa that's a- that's a beautiful continent, we've got so many resources, a vibrant people, but are suffering for various reasons. And Israel, over the years, has offered assistance to us, how that assistance has been hampered by people who actually don't want to see us do well, but also who have taken our narrative. And instead of saying, let's see what the solution can be with regards to the Palestinian people and the Israelis, have actually taken our narrative for purposes of demonizing and wanting to continue to de-identify, you know, the existence of Israel. So, my contribution to the book is reminding people of what the definition of apartheid is, because the way that it's been banted around, people, I've at least experienced, and even here on campuses, that they actually don't even know what apartheid means anymore. They've forgotten the fact or have no idea that it was a systematic way of, by way of legislation, over 150 codified pieces of legislation separating and segregating people based purely on the color of their skin. I mean, I have stories where I personally, or with regards to my parents, couldn't do things, go to the same schools, ride public transportation systems, access to hospitals, just because we were black. And you don't see that in Israel. And also how unfortunately, an icon such as former President Nelson Mandela of South Africa, how because he was sympathetic to the cause of the Palestinians, how they've taken that, and they've forgotten the fact that he, even though he was pro-Palestinian, he wanted to see the Palestinian people also enjoy life that they deserve. They've now taken that and said that he was anti-Israel, he was an anti-Zionist. Not true at all.
Not true, yeah.
And he speaks even about the fact that Israel has a right to live in secure borders, but they don't speak to that. So highlighting the fact that just because you're pro-Zionist, it doesn't mean that you're anti-Palestinian. And then touching also a little bit on the fact that, you know, when you call Israel a colonizer or say it's a colonial state, how you're actually doing a disservice and insulting the very best African nations that were colonized, you know? So that had a double whammy. We were colonized by the British, and then we experienced apartheid as well. So, I'm hoping that as people read the book, that they have a better understanding of why we cannot allow the apartheid-Israeli narrative to continue.
Look, I agree with you completely, and I have to tell you, I think the villain of this piece is somebody I used to admire, and that is Bishop Desmond Tutu, who has taken Nelson Mandela's points totally out of context. You know, I was one of the lawyers, along with Erwin Koller, who were trying to get Nelson Mandela released. I was banned by Watts University for making a speech against apartheid. I edited the first legal arguments in the Yale Law Journal, setting out what apartheid was all about in 1961, 1962. And it palls me when I hear an analogy between what's going on in Israel and what was one of the greatest evils in the history of the world, formal apartheid. And it demeans what African people suffered so greatly under apartheid when you show a city like Ramallah, where Palestinians are living openly and free, and they have wonderful restaurants and cars, and they're equal, they can vote in Palestinian elections, and Israeli Palestinians now have 15 seats in the Knesset, and they were part of the negotiations. The idea of analogizing that in any way to what black Africans went through for so many years is just wrong. And I'm so glad that you're standing up against that. I know if Nelson Mandela were alive today, and he was one of the greatest men in history, he would be standing up against Bishop Tutu and saying, no, those are not my words. You can be pro-Palestinian and pro-Israel. I think of myself that way. I favor the two-state solution. Whenever I speak on campuses, I say I'm pro-Palestine, I'm pro-Israel, and there's no incompatibility. In fact, it's good for Israel for people to want to see the Palestinians live in peace and thrive. So, thank you for writing those brilliant essays and for doing what you do to support moral truths.
And let's go to Josh, please.
Thank you, Danny. Thanks again, like Olga said, for having me. It's an honor to be here and to be talking with you and hearing from you two, Professor Dershowitz. Thank you. I am, as you said, the Director of Institute for Black Solidarity with Israel. And Ipsy was, just like Olga, was started by my father. And it was after, we, you know, we all know that Martin Luther King was a staunch Zionist, and even though that gets called into question sometimes, beyond that, there wasn't very much out there as far as black support for Israel back during the Civil Rights Movement. And my father just happened to find some newspaper clippings and some other writings in a basement of a library one day, of an organization called BASIC, Black American Supporting Israel Committee. And it was founded by Martin Luther King's, one of his right-hand, Bayard Rustin. And Bayard Rustin is someone that we know a lot about. But BASIC, there's not really a lot about BASIC out there on the internet. And so, my father found it. He said he nearly cried. He immediately put it up online, it's all over the place now. And from there, he started Ipsy, which kind of echoed those same sentiments. BASIC was a very powerful organization. And just like Martin Luther King's comments about Israel, which was in response to some of the antisemitism and anti-Zionism coming out of the black community, BASIC was in response to the rising tide of antisemitism in the black community. So BASIC was formed just a few years after the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee came out with their article called Test Your Knowledge. They had a big article with, I think, over 30 questions that are anti-Israel talking points that we still hear today. And it was so, and for those who know SNCC, they carry a lot of weight, you know? At the time, they were responsible for pushing back against the, even when the Civil Rights Bill was passed, there was still de facto segregation. So they would go, the Freedom Riders and people who were members of SNP, go to the segregated South and sit in coffee shops and all that stuff. And so, when you saw an organization like that publish an article that's just so blatantly anti-Israel, it would turn, I think, a lot of the people in the black community would be willing to accept that without a lot of question, because well, up to this point, they're the organization that they trust. So BASIC wasn't just formed just because Bayard Rustin thought it was a good idea for black people to support Israel. It was formed in response to this push against the Jewish people that he was seeing. And it was, in its beginning state, the document that BASIC had written up to form the organization was signed by over 200 people, a lot of prominent civil rights leaders, prominent musicians, Count Basie, Lionel Hampton was it, was the treasurer, Coretta Scott King, Martin Luther King Senior. So, for me, that not only strengthens the argument that Martin Luther King was a Zionist, you see the fruit that he worked, you know? These are people who are closest to him, who did this in his name.
Look, I remember, I remember these events. These are very much part of my own personal memory. I was at the I Have a Dream speech in 1973, 1960, in violation of an order. I was a law clerk on the Supreme Court, and the Chief Justice said, nobody who works for the judiciary can go to that speech. And I went with my judge. Both of us violated the order. I went down south, and I participated in the Civil Rights Movement in the summers of 61 and 62. And I remembered Bayard Rustin and his strong support for Israel. And Martin Luther King's famous statement, when you talk anti-Zionism, you're talking antisemitism, took place at Harvard. And so, these are all part of my memory bank, and it's always been appalling to me how some, and you can't generalize, some leaders of the extremist groups in the black community, the Panthers and others, turned against Israel. At Harvard, on the other hand, many of the leading professors, whether it be Charles Ogle Tree, or whether it be Skip Gates, have always been pro-Israel, pro-Israel, pro-Palestine. And so, I think that it's so important for us to get back to the days of the Civil Rights Movement, when African-Americans and Jewish-Americans marched hand in hand against bigotry. And as Martin Luther King said, when there's bigotry against anyone, there's bigotry against everyone. So, the movement to stop anti-Israel bigotry and anti-Jewish bigotry is part of the broader Civil Rights Movement that we are all in together. And it's so important for us to speak to these issues in a united way. So thank you both so much for the work you do and for the efforts you make. And please call on me, because I want to work with you on these matters. It makes me feel so good. It brings me back to the day in the 60s, when I was working so closely with African-American leaders. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Alan, what I'd like to do right now, just before we close to say goodbye to your people, all of your wonderful guests who have come here, and Alan, I just wanted to know if you have any other comments on all your work also about what you've done recently as far as black-Jewish relations, fighting antisemitism, fighting the intersectionality, you know, talking about working together with people like Black Lives Matters? And if you just give a real quick thing, and then we'll go to the end.
Well, I think we have to put aside, you know, differences and focus on what we have in common. What we have in common is we're all fighting bigotry. We're all fighting extremists on the right, and we're fighting extremists on the left as well. We're fighting violence, and we're standing together to try to make the case for moral clarity. And African-Americans and Jewish-Americans have so much more in common than we have differences. For me, Dan talked about what inspired him. I was nine years old when Jackie Robinson came to play for the Brooklyn Dodgers. And for me, that was such a transformative event in my life, because I thought of him as part of my people. Here we were being discriminated against, Jews were discriminated against in college admission, and blacks were discriminated against. And when Jackie Robinson came to bat for the first time, I remember saying to myself, if he can play second base for the Brooklyn Dodgers and hit .342 and be the Rookie of the Year and be the MVP, as a Jew from Brooklyn, I can do anything. There are no limits to where we can go. And Jackie Robinson inspired us so much. And I got to meet his wife later in life, Rachel. And I have pictures of only two people in my office, Thomas Jefferson and Jackie Robinson. It's ironic, because Thomas Jefferson would have had Jackie Robinson as a slave, but nobody's perfect. But I love Thomas Jefferson and his writing of the Declaration of Independence, and I love Jackie Robinson. And I think so many Jews of my generation were inspired by him, that I really want to go back to the time when we can work together and put aside our differences. There are going to be differences. But focus on the commonality and how we can fight the kind of bigotry that we're experiencing all over the world today, because it affects our communities equally. And I just want to thank all of my guests and those who have done so much on behalf of the struggle for justice for Israel, the struggle for justice all over the world. And on Yom HaShoah, we just have to remember what the fruits of injustice can be, and the fruits of injustice are not just theoretical, they are what happened in the Shoah. And it's so important to stand together to make sure that never again means never again for the Jewish people, means never again for the African-American and African people, means never again for so many people who have suffered bigotry and discrimination. We stand together against bigotry and in favor of moral clarity. So, thank you all very much.
So Alan, just to close the program, to use one of your most favorite phrases to talk about, you always close your, many of your talks with, "Ashem oz levot ha'itne, hashem yivarech ha'tomob ha'sholom." Through our strength, we will redeem ourselves. And to close the program, I wanted to show as many people, people who are not familiar with me, of course, I was an Air Force pilot for the US in Israel, and I was privileged and honored really by you and by your colleague, Erwin Koller, that at that conference at Jagloin University, the day before the March of the Living, three years ago, I actually opened the March of the Living, speaking to 10,000 young people, and presenting the very famous film, which I'm just going to show the last clip here of, of the overflight of the Israeli Air Force overflight.
I have that photograph hanging in my office. I don't let anybody come into my office without seeing that photograph of the Israeli Air Force flying over Auschwitz and thinking how the world would have been different if Israel had been allowed to come into existence 20 years earlier or 30 years earlier.
Again, thank you, Alan, and thank you to all of your guests. And may everyone remember the lessons of this so that we may become strong and work together to make a better world.
Amen.